Hello, I'm the town council meeting, September 11th, 2025. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lopez is not present. Councilmember Keel?
Present.
Councilmember Floyd, not present. Councilmember Greer?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Vice Mayor Searcher?
Here.
Mayor Pogba?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to welcome everyone to stand. We're going to do a moment of silence tonight for a few seconds, and then move on to the pledge. Thank you. Now, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I want you to approve the agenda as presented. So moved. Have a second?
A second.
Please, please call the vote.
Councilmember Keel, your vote? How do you wish to vote?
Uh, yea.
Thank you, Mayor. That passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to proclamations. First up is Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome Awareness Day.
Whereas Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome, PTHS, is a rare genetic disorder caused by a mutation on chromosome 18 affecting intellectual development, motor skills, and communication; and whereas individuals with PTHS and their families face significant challenges, yet demonstrate remarkable resilience, courage, and love; and whereas increased awareness and understanding of PTHS can lead to earlier diagnosis, improved therapies, and greater support for affected individuals and their families; and whereas the Pitt-Hopkins Research Foundation and families across the globe unite each year on September 18 to raise awareness and advocate for research and inclusion; and whereas the date, September 18, is symbolic, as the disorder is caused by a mutation on the 18th chromosome. Now therefore, I call Pogba, Mayor of Prescott Valley, to hereby proclaim September 18, 2025, as Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome Awareness Day, in Prescott Valley, and encourage all citizens to learn more about this condition and support affected families. Thank you.
Good morning. Good afternoon. My name is Tajana Locke Miller. This is my daughter Isabel Locke Miller, and this is Jackson Locke Miller. I want to begin by sincerely thanking everyone up here for, and for our community for recognizing Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome, which is going to be on September 18th, is our Awareness Day. This recognition means so much, not only to my family, but to the many families across the world who are touched by this rare condition. Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome is an ultra-rare genetic disorder caused by a change in the TCF4 gene. It affects development, I'm sorry, it affects development and can bring challenges with breathing, speech, and intellectual body. But just as importantly, it also comes with joy, resilience, and a community that is full of hope and strength. Right now, there are only 1,564 individuals worldwide who have been identified with Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome. My daughter was the first in Arizona to receive this diagnosis in 2015 at the age of five. Now today, there are 11 individuals in our state. Not many. But, you know, we have a bunch across the world that share the same journey with us. By declaring September 18th as Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome Day, the 18th is due to the mutation of the gene being on the 18th chromosome. Our town is helping shine a light on this rare condition and on the incredible individuals and families who live with it every day. If you would like more information on Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome, or would like to visit, or like to see how else you can help individuals affected with this ultra-rare syndrome, please visit www.pitthopkins.org. On behalf of my daughter, my family, and the entire Pitt community, I thank you for standing with us and helping raise awareness together. We can make a difference. Thank you.
Next up, our proclamation for Constitution Week. Ladies?
Well, September 17, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and as it is fatal and proper to read, study, and preach the greatest document of human liberty and to protect the freedoms set forth through the Bill of Rights, and as it is fatal and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and as it is fatal and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated in September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I call Pogba, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, to hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, Town Council. There is Captain Hapsham, the Yabapi chapter daughters of the American Revolution. With that, I have Linda Sheebak and Karen Larson. Okay, some of the others apparently didn't make it. But the United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of our Americans throughout history to maintain our liberties and freedoms and to ensure those inalienable rights to every American. The tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started by the daughters of the American Revolution in 1955. DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 through 23 annually to be dedicated to the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The aims of this celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and a foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Thank you all so very, very much. Thank you.
Next up, call to the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must register their name with the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Clerk?
We have two citizens registered for a call to the public, and that is Erin O'Hara and Steve Brissetti.
Welcome, ma'am. Try it again. Try it again. Hang on, we got someone coming. Perfect.
All right. Mayor, Town Council, Town Staff, and Prescott Valley residents, I just want to take a few moments to talk about the Freedom Rock and possibly clear up any misperceptions there might be. While the PV Freedom Rock is a joint-community Town of PV venture, it is funded only by private community contributions. The Town of PV gifted us the land on which the rock will sit, and that is all. They are not funding any portion of this effort. Last month, when I did a presentation here on the rock, I included a slide that showed a budget of approximately $16,900 for the rock itself. That almost $17,000 is only for the painting of the rock and includes any fees, travel, hotel, and supplies Bubba Sorensen will get. It does not include anything else necessary to accomplish our goal. That number is closer to $50,000. The rock being painted is by no means the end of this journey. It is merely a pause on the way to completion. If you've seen our brochures, our goal is to build a site that is befitting and respectful of our rock. This site will be a place for folks from near and far come visit and think of their loved ones who served, past and present, or to remember those who fought long ago and gave us what we've got today. For the veterans themselves, it will be a place of solitude, a place to reflect on their brothers and sisters in arms, some of whom may no longer be with us. And speaking of that, did you know that Bubba includes veterans' ashes in his paint when he does the rocks? This places an even greater reverence on the rock and what it stands for. Other than the rock itself, our site will have pony walls surrounding it that will double as benches, an ADA ramp for easy access for those who are in wheelchairs or perhaps aren't as steady on their feet anymore. It will also have a pergola to protect our sacred rock from the brutal Arizona sun. There will be stanchions and chains to ensure our rock is seen by others as the hallowed piece of history that it is. And finally, the site will be lined with bricks honoring veterans past and present, and with the names of businesses, organizations, and families who support our veterans. Our official ribbon-cutting ceremony will be on 4 July 2026, our great nation's 250th birthday. Our fundraising will continue until at least then, perhaps longer if there are still bricks for sale or we haven't met our goal financially. We remind the public that if you have any questions, you can always email us at freedomrockpv@gmail.com, or you can come by the library on Wednesdays from 10:30 to noon, as we always have a committee member there to help. And finally, we ask you to follow and like us on Facebook at Freedom Rock Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir. No, not at all. I thought Casey was just there.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council people, and staff, Steve Brissetti, with respect to yesterday's tragic events and keeping the Kirk family in our thoughts and prayers, and with remembrance to this solemn event today, and those who perished on 9/11, especially my friend and college roommate Stephen Hoffman, I wanted to share something positive that happened yesterday. With partnering with the Yabapi College, the chamber hosted the Job Fair here in Prescott Valley at Finley Toyota Center, and there were over 52 businesses, companies registered for this event. We had over 370 job seekers, people looking for jobs. And just to share a great story, there was one lady who was for years a stay-at-home mom, and she was so nervous walking into the building, and she had her resume in hand, and we looked over her resume, and at the end of the day, she got a job offer. So I think, you know, with yesterday's tragedies and today's remembrance, I wanted to share something positive that something good happened yesterday, which is a silver lining. And thank you, Councilmember Keel, for attending that. We really appreciate it. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Council Communications. Start to my right. Councilman?
Steve, that was a great event, and I was glad to see, you know, all the businesses out there and people, you know, getting an opportunity to find work. It was really a cool event. I also wanted to mention that tonight is the Healing Field Ceremony at 6:00 PM over at the Civic Center. So if any of you are free, it's a wonderful event, and I hope to see you there. Thanks. Bye.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to do a shout-out to the Humboldt Unified School District. Today, the school district board of trustees will be meeting, and normally their meeting would take place at 5:00 PM. And my civic-minded daughter said, Daddy, why can't the board meet earlier so we can attend the Healing Field Ceremony? So with that, I called the superintendent Brett Dahl, and he ended up speaking to Board President Brian Wolcott, and the board agreed to move the meeting up to 4:00 PM to allow families to attend, students and families to attend the Healing Field Ceremony. So I just want to say publicly to the Humboldt Unified School District and to the school board and to the superintendent, thank you. I also had the opportunity this morning and a little bit about, this afternoon, speaking to middle school students at Liberty Traditional School about 9/11, and I just wanted to say that was a great experience, and I wanted to just publicly thank Ronald Meyer, who was one of the social studies teachers for 8th grade, for the invitation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davidson, you're up. Manager's report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, next week, we do have a special study session here in the council chambers at 5:30 PM next Thursday, and that is going to be a report out from the Citizen Committee that's been working for the past several months on the Community Aquatic and Recreation Center. So they'll be providing an update to the town council on that. And I have two really positive items. I want to recognize our town clerk for two special recognitions that she has received. Fatima has been working on a designation as town clerk as to be a master town clerk, and she has now achieved that, and so we want to congratulate her on that. There's, we're very lucky to have a town clerk in our community here in the state of Arizona that has achieved that designation, and she went through a whole series of processes to be able to get that designation. She also is being recognized with an Athena Award for Women in Leadership Position, and so we're very excited. She's a finalist, and we will find out tomorrow if she receives a award. But nonetheless, to be a finalist in this whole region is quite a feat, and so we congratulate her on that as well. And our communications team has also made us proud. They have received two national designations for two of the different projects that they've been working on, and that was, again, a national award. There were literally hundreds, if not thousands, of different submittals. And our town and our comms team received two of the top awards, and so we're very, very excited for the work that they're doing as well. So thank you.
Next up, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Discussion is desired. That item will be removed, and the consent agenda will be considered separately. Council, if there's no items to be removed, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve all items listed under consent agenda by electronic vote.
A second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Pogba?
Yes.
Mayor, that passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to old business, DMC 25-002, Robert Road Duplex Lot 961. This is second reading, and it was mentioned on the agenda as a public hearing, so we will treat it as such. Public hearing is open. Welcome, ma'am.
Planner 1 for Development Services with the town of Prescott Valley. I have nothing else to add to the application, but I am here if you have questions.
And this is an opportunity, because it is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to speak about this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, we have anything to add from last? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I do the reading?
Actually, I'm sorry, we're not going to entertain a motion today.
Ordinance number 2025-959, in ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 25-002, by preserving the RS4 residential services zoning designation, but amending the original conditions applied to Lot 961, Prescott Valley, Unit 3, in ordinance number 489, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass? And I'm over here. It's not working on my tablet.
How do you wish to vote?
Yea.
Yea. Thank you. All right, that passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, DMC 25-003, Robert Road Duplex Lot 962, consideration of possible action. This is a public hearing, which I am opening up. Anyone wish to speak about this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, was there anything for staff?
Ordinance number 2025-960, in ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 25-003, by preserving the RS4 residential services zoning designation, but amending the original conditions applied to Lot 962, Prescott Valley, Unit 3, in ordinance number 489, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Mayor, that passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to 9C, Town Code Amendment, fence material, consideration of possible action. It's going to be second reading as well. Ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. I have nothing additional to add. I'm here for questions.
Council, we have any additional questions? Seeing none. Clerk?
Ordinance number 2025-953, in ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, enacting section 13-7-75, fence materials, in Article 13-7, general provisions, in Chapter 13 zoning, of the Town Code, to prohibit the use of certain materials for fence screening, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing repeal, reenacted, or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Shall this ordinance pass?
Mayor, that passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 10A, Public Professional Art Program. Welcome, ma'am.
So my name is Elise Padell. I am the Recreation Manager, and I will be discussing the public art policy proposal. So Prescott Valley does currently have a public art program, as you can see, walking around the Civic Center campus. We do have some procedures operating to keep the program operational. However, it's limited, and we wanted to create a more robust policy to manage this. Our public art program currently furthers education and appreciation for art. Our public art program currently furthers education and appreciation for art, and contributes to the quality of life and cultural vibrancy of the community, and of course, from an efficiency standpoint, we want to have procedures to back this. So again, these procedures will largely contribute to the acquisition and display of professional artwork on selected town-owned property. We will have our eligibility standards, so eligible artwork will include drawings, paintings, murals, frescoes, a whole slew of artwork. Some things that would not be eligible would be artwork that's mass-produced, so we're really trying to capture unique art pieces here in Prescott Valley. We also want to ensure that artwork is able to be installed in public spaces and has visibility and impact, because, you know, it's public art. So preference will be given to permanent structures that retain value, because we don't want to be constantly changing out the artwork that's in our collection. We also wanted to establish eligibility for artists. We are designating this to accommodate professional artists, so that would be individuals that are engaged in full-time or part-time production of artwork, teachers of art, and then participants in community programs that are headed by professional art programs. So professional artists may participate in kind of overseeing and mentoring younger artists. For program administration, the Arts and Culture Coordinator, who largely put together these policies, Mackenzie Reynolds, she'll be coordinating the day-to-day administrative duties regarding public and professional art, and that will include creating and maintaining a database, we already have an existing database, but increasing that as we get more artwork onboard, creating and maintaining a consistent maintenance schedule for our artwork, which again, we're already doing, now we're just putting it in on our paperwork and procedure, preparing a call to artists as needed in consultation with the implementing town departments, that'll come into play later when we talk about CIP art policy, presiding at any meetings of our Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission to go over the various applications we have for public art, and talking about the art selection and facilitating the discussion for artwork, being the point of contact for our artists and the general public who might have any inquiries regarding the public professional art program, recommending program scope, budget, and contractual responsibilities, and then of course, the more tedious paperwork side of approving payments and dealing with the contracts associated with artwork. So for our selection of artwork, we wanted to designate what would enable us to select an art to be a part of our collection, we want to make sure that our art is thought-provoking, memorable, and enduring, that it reflects the diverse social, cultural, and historical values of the town, that it's appropriate for the proposed location in terms of the size, form, design, and then also historical significance. We want to make sure, of course, it's publicly accessible, making sure we respect ADA compliance, that our artwork can be properly installed so that it can be seen and displayed with safety in mind, that it can also be displayed in a manner that prevents theft and vandalism, is not a government endorsement of religion in violation with our Establishment Clause of federal and state constitutions, and then would not, when displayed, create a hostile work environment or environment for the public, and then of course, does not any depict graphic violence or overt sexual activity. The artwork report is going to be a part of the selection, so artists will need to let us know ahead of time when they're applying for being a part of a public art program, what the title, the artist, the medium, dimensions, possible display locations or limitations in regard to the display, the origin, source of the material, where they kind of got their ideas from, some photographs, the condition, the value, because that comes into play with insurance later on when the town acquires it and owns it, the cost of the purchase, and if there's terms to the loan, if it's a permanent feature, or if it's going to be something they're donating for a short period and loaning to us for a short period of time, and then any routine maintenance cost that might be associated with the artwork. We also have the ability, and we have currently some artwork that's already been donated, but we want to make sure that we know how to manage those donations, those loans, and things that might be commissioned. So applications to loan artwork must be for no less than three months. Applications need to include, very similar to the artwork selection items, so photos, plans, models, display location, description, the biography of the artist, so this is getting into when we actually have accepted the artist, the length of the loan, and then of course, information for the artist, so we can include it in our public art map. So display sites, we have determined that artwork that is loaned or donated, or is purchased for the town's public art program can be displayed in the following sites, any town-controlled property with high visibility or impact, or other sites that are established through contracts and things like that. Again, these are things we're already doing, but we're just putting now into a policy. We are, of course, making sure that we are keeping in mind the conservation and preservation of all of our public art, we want to make sure that the art, you know, is maintained well, so our Arts and Culture Coordinator will consider the condition of artwork each year in preparation for the budget and make recommendations regarding estimated cost if there are maintenance or repairs that need to be done to the artwork. We will allow artists to dictate whether they want to be the ones making the repairs, or if that's something that we in the town can work on. A lot of artists are very particular as far as how they want the art to be done, or what needs to happen as far as repairs go, and take pride in their work, so oftentimes, they want to be considered in that, so that's something we'll keep in mind as well. If there is some sort of emergency conservation that needs to take place, our Arts and Culture Coordinator will of course reach out to the artist first, but if it's something that's timely, then the town will of course have to make sure that we are keeping the site safe, and will do what needs to be done to effectively keep the site safe. As far as removing artwork, so right now, we currently have some items that are on permanent loan, what that exactly means is unclear, because we don't have proper documentation for those things, so again, you know, making sure our ducks are in a row documentation-wise, but then of course, knowing what steps need to be taken when we remove art, or if we have to remove art. So artwork will obviously be reviewed, and if we do find that we need to de-assess it, then we'll make that call, and then we will also remove it at the prescribed term if it is a loan, and then of course, we might have to remove artwork if any of the following reasons applies, so physical or structural condition poses a threat to safety, artwork requires excessive maintenance that they might not be able to do on-site since the artwork is already installed, the artwork has been damaged, and repair might be impractical, or we might not be able to get the artwork where it needs to get to in order to maintain the integrity of the art piece, and then the condition or the security of the artwork can't be reasonably protected. If there's changes in use, character, or design of the site, so if we decide, you know, we are putting something else in that location, of course, we'll have to remove the artwork in that area, and then of course, if the artist requests to remove the art, we'll work with them through that. Any questions regarding the public art or public professional art policy?
Thank you, ma'am, for your presentation. Council, are there any questions, comments?
So are these going to be discussed and decided on in staff? It looked like some go-to-park commission for recommendation, I guess my question would be to Gilbert, and then would it come to council, or if it's under fifty thousand, then staff makes the decision? I just wanted a little clarity on that.
So it would first go to park, where as far as they would make the selection, and then I believe we did dictate it would go to council over a certain threshold. Any additional questions?
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2025-2433, adopting Town Policy Number 1-13, Public Professional Art Program.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Yes.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Capital Improvement Art Program Policy.
So, yep, I will be presenting again. So our capital improvements, public art. So the policy and purpose of this capital improvement art policy is to establish procedures for artwork that is selected and installed on each designated capital improvement project, and funded all or in part by contributions from the associated CIPs. So this CIP, Public Art Program, is intended to improve the overall aesthetic environment of Prescott Valley and contribute to the quality of life, cultural vibrancy, economic growth, and civic pride of the community. Photos that are on here are for illustrative purposes only. So with CIP contributions, what we're proposing is that any CIPs with an estimated budget of five hundred thousand or more shall include an additional one percent that would fund artwork that would go in association with that CIP. If the total cost is less than the amount contributed, remaining funds could be applied to other eligible costs within that project. Exemptions for that would have, you know, the authority from the Town Council, things that we can choose to exempt, raise or lower the appropriations, that would be at the discretion of the council. Grounds for exemption or adjustment would be construction, no high impact or visibility if the town manager determines that diversion of the one percent would compromise the operational integrity of the CIP project, projects that are associated with cultural resources, historic preservation, or neighborhood reinvestment, or projects associated with wastewater management and water treatment. So what we're looking to do is kind of bolster the arts within Prescott Valley by attributing one percent of those large-scale CIPs to art. So with projects with additional funding sources, we took that under consideration, so each funding source would contribute to the public art in proportion to their individual contributions to the overall project, unless there are some regulations that apply. The process for CIP, Public Art, would be the initiation of the public art project, which would be the initiation of the CIP. The Parks and Recreation or Arts and Culture Coordinator would work largely with the department that's implementing the CIP to determine what they're looking for as far as the scope of the project. There's a large variety of projects that have been utilized for various other agencies that have done a similar CIP, Public Art Program. So it could be something like on the previous slideshow where they were painting the different water towers, over here, you can see that there's art associated with retaining walls, so the Arts and Culture Coordinator would largely work with the Implementing Department. We would put out a call to artists to the database that we're maintaining through our policy, we would then select the artists and the artwork based on what makes sense for the scope of the project. With this CIP, Public Art Program, we are proposing that there is a CIP Art Review Committee. That committee would comprise of the Implementing Department, the Arts and Culture Coordinator, one of, two of our park commissioners, and then I believe our Public Words Director and Finance Director, so there would be a large volume of people on this committee to make sure that the project makes sense and was within the budget, and then there would be the Preparation Administration of the Town Contract. Eligible art and artists and selection would all adhere to the Public Art Policy, so that way, everything would be consistent within public art. All of the public art in association with the CIP would still fall under the same maintenance and schedule of routine as all other public art. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
I don't really have a question, I just think, I just like the idea of beautifying Prescott Valley.
Thank you.
So there would be no correlation between the project and where the art would go, correct?
There would be, so it would have to be in the site and location where the CIP is. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a great example is what ADOT does across the state, so every time they do overpass projects, they always incorporate, you know, nice relief features or different color variations, and they usually represent the area that they're building those things, so it'd be similar to that, so it'd either be incorporated into the design, like retain walls and whatnot, or you could have a standalone art signature piece that's going to be near the roadway or a facility.
Thank you. Council, anything else? Thank you, ma'am, seeing no other questions or comments, can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2025-2432, adopting Town Policy 1-12, Capital Improvements Public Art Program.
I'll second.
Please call the vote.
Mayor, that passes.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, final item, 10C, Amending Town Code 2-04-060, Order of Business, Ms. Fernandez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, this is a very simple request, we're requesting to add a new line item to our Order of Business and our agenda for the council appointments and reappointments of candidates to all the different boards and commissions and committees. If you recall, a couple meetings ago, we established new procedures for the screening, interviewing, and recommending of those candidates, and to make it easier and efficient for us to process those appointments, we are requesting just to add the line item to the Order of Business.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments?
Just for clarity, so citizens will submit their applications, staff will review the applications, will staff send those on to council so that we can also take a look at them in advance, and then you will interview privately, and then it comes to council for a possible another interview? I just, I'm a little confused.
No, so basically, staff has the authority to do the screening, interviewing, and recommendation of the candidates, what we're doing with this agenda item is adding a line item to the Order of Business, right after consent and before old business, we will create that staff report for you to review and approve, and do whatever you want to talk about it during a council meeting, instead of just putting things under consent, so it'll just be its own line item.
And will we see the applications in advance?
All the applications will be included within the staff report.
Anything else, can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to read Ordinance Number 2025-961 by title only on two separate occasions and place the same on final passage.
I'll second.
Please call the vote.
Mayor, that passes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ordinance Number 2025-961. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Section 2-4-60, Order of Business in Article 2-4, Council Procedure, in Chapter 2, Mayor and Council, to add a new line item, board, commission, and committee appointments to the council meeting Order of Business, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code, not hearing amended, shall remain in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance to be effective thirty days after its passage and approval according to law. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 11, adjournment, anything for the good of the order? Seeing none, thanks for coming out, everyone, have a good night.